Good morning, everyone. It's 9:04, and I'm going to start this meeting of the Planning Commission. First, establish that we have a quorum. There are six out of seven here. Joe may join us shortly. First item of business is the consent agenda. Planning Commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. The only item on the consent agenda is the minutes from last month's meeting. So, I'm going to open public comment. Anyone wish to speak on the minutes from last month's meeting? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. All right, regular agenda, rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. The City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings. First item is PD 20-02, 3824 Green Meadow Drive. Request for approval of an amendment to Plan Development Zoning District, PD 2002, to allow high-rise multifamily RM2 zoning for a three-story affordable senior living facility located at 3824 Green Meadow Drive.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ray Lineberry, Planner. And so, this one is just an amendment to the original PD. The original PD was for RM1, only two-story senior living apartments. They want to move it to three stories. So, it is 1.423 acres. Again, they're requesting RM2 base instead of the RM1. It's in District 6, Larry Miller, the Bonham neighborhood. As you can see, on the left, well, my left, might be yours, the zoning, there is already RM1 around it. There's commercial. There is a bus stop near there that will be good for the seniors. And if you can see in this top picture over here, there's already three-story buildings off of Oak Grove, which will be down the street from them. This is their concept plan. The apartment buildings and the parking, and they do also have a little dog park there. We mailed 25 notices. We've received one in support, zero in opposition. Staff does feel that it is compatible with our plans and policies, that staff believes that the multifamily development adheres to the policy, and it provides a transition between the residential and the commercial. It is compatible with the existing and proposed PD that was originally there. It was supposed to be an assisted living facility also, or, sorry, a senior living facility. And, like I said, it's near a bus stop. The commercial amenities, it's within walking distance. There's a McDonald's, a spa. We feel that it would work well in this area. So, staff is recommending approval with four conditions, that they do adhere to the RM2 base zoning with the exception of the minimum rear yard setback is zero feet and the side yard setback is at zero feet. That was in the original PD. We just carried it forward. Number two, that the overall site shall be in accordance with the approved concept plan. And number three is that they turn in a UDR, an urban design review, and then all exterior lighting should be shielded and downward emitting. With that, is there any questions?
Do you have questions for the staff? Do you mind going back to the concept plan? You noted a zero lot line setback on two sides of this lot. Could you?
Yes.
Clarify that, please.
So, back here, because of the shape of the lot, it was originally approved that they could get closer to the back property line. So, that was a zero-foot setback, which, if you see, there is actually a little bit more there than the zero. And then, closer to this side property line, they're actually not doing zero, but it was approved originally to get closer to this side yard.
What's, what is to the east? What is on the east side of that lot?
The green area? I think it's a drainage way.
Is it? Yeah. I mean, is it?
I think it's a floodway. I'm trying to look in the picture there. I'm pretty sure it's the floodway.
Okay, so, we've got, we've got an adequate buffer even?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to verify. Okay.
On the opposite side, there's that AEP easement as well.
Yes.
An overhead easement.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward and state your name, an address, or single-member district. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion. The, I personally don't object to the three-story. My concern, I guess, is if we're going high-rise, it could be more than three-story. And I think three-story is adequate there. I think more than three-story might begin to encroach on some of the development nearby. Can we restrict it to three-story?
You could make that as a condition.
Okay.
Since this is a planned development, you can condition that, and you could say you could limit it to three stories high.
Anyone else want to share thoughts or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with Travis's addition of the condition that it will not exceed three stories.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with a three-story limit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Item 2, PD 9707 Amendment, San Angelo Airport. Discussion and action on adoption of Airport Master Plan and Public Hearing on Amendment to Plan Development Zoning District, PD 9707, with an underlying general commercial, heavy commercial, light manufacturing zoning to conform to the Airport 2020 Master Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry Bailey, Principal Planner. I mentioned to you at the last meeting that we were going to bring this forward. It is actually twofold in that we are suggesting that you adopt the master plan for the airport since that has been approved by the City Council, and then we will put that in our bucket, if you will, of approved plans and studies that have been done so that anytime there is anything out in that area that needs to be reviewed, we go back to that master plan to review it. The second part of that master plan is we are also suggesting that their real estate plan becomes the plan that we refer to both in the review in that general area and then as part of the amendment for this PD 9707 amendment. That was the original planning, plan, if you will, for this entire airport area, but it was very general without really nailing things down. And so, every time there's something that occurs out there, they have to come in and get an amendment for that application, whether it's a misplaced airport hangar or anything like that. And so, with the new real estate plan, we will follow their guidelines that they have adopted. So, and we've referred to two different acreages only because the airport itself is one, and then the broader area is the 471 acres. This is an amendment then to PD 9707 in particular. It's in District 1, Tommy Hebert's district, and it's for the institutional and commercial future land use for the airport. And the Plan Development Zoning is what we're talking about on this side. That is the plan, and I know it's difficult to read, but on the, over here, it's broken out by color, the general areas that they're talking about, whether it's industrial or commercial area, and then they have identified those areas on that real estate map, and so that will be our guideline. We sent out eight notices. We did not receive anything back, either in support or opposition. Our rationale is, our intent in this case is to adopt both the concept plan and the real estate plan and their master plan for covering anything to do with the airport. They've done the work for us, and then we will just make sure that what we do supports that. We believe the overall plan is compatible with the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed plans are also consistent with the city's zoning ordinance. Staff believes this plan would also be compatible with the surrounding areas, existing uses and intends to use that when any new uses want to come in. And our intent is that it is a public use. We believe that there's no effect on the natural environment. We believe this meets the established public needs evaluation, and that the uses established in the real estate plan should become allowed uses as each project comes forward. So, staff's recommendation is the approval of the amendment to the PD 9707 to include the airport real estate land use plan and the concept plan. And with that, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Just to clarify, you had two different acreages.
Yes.
I'm assuming the PD covers land area outside of the airport itself.
Yes, it does. Outside of the very narrowly defined airport area, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward, state your name and address, or single-member district. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Conditional uses, this is, this is really the last section of our meeting, and there's a lot of folks in here, so, just by show of hands, if you're here for 119 Malone, would you please raise your hand? All right. 2246 Joy Road? Overwhelming majority. And then, 17 West 13th Street. Let's start with 119 Malone. CU 2307, 119 North Malone. Request for renewal of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 119 North Malone Street.
Good morning, Ray Lineberry again. This is a renewal, and for a short-term rental, it is in the RM1 zoning, District 3, Harry Thomas, Fort Concho East neighborhood. There is, this is the only STR in the 14, in the Fort Concho East neighborhood. There are 18 notices mailed out. We received one in favor, and it was the one next door. Zero opposed. So, staff is recommending a renewal for a year instead of the normal two years. She hasn't, she hadn't had time to really operate. She had a lot of repairs and renovations, and just recently got her CO, so we are recommending for one-year renewal instead of the recommended two.
Okay.
Is there any question?
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, just for verification, no police calls, no code compliance?
Correct. There's been no police calls, no code compliance. She is working with finance to get up to date on her hotel taxes, and she did have an inspection and the fire inspection and everything done.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address, or single-member district. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Rachel Ramirez, and I am the owner of 119 North Malone, like I mentioned, or Ray mentioned, sorry. It did take a little while to get operating. We've been full force since November the 9th, and it's been a really great outcome. The neighbors, everybody loves it. They're actually working, everybody's working on their house now. And so, the, you know, the tourists, they come in, I don't know how, but it's been fully booked. We probably, this past two months, or now three, maybe three-day turnovers per month. So, it's just, it's been fully occupied. So, if we can, we would allow your blessing today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. I'm going to skip down to 17 West 13th Street. CU 2405, a request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 17 West 13th Street.
Good morning, Ray Lineberry again. This is a request for a short-term rental. It is zoned RS2, but it is a single-family home, District 4, Lucy Gonzalez, Reagan There are zero active in the Reagan neighborhood. There was one that was expired, and then now this current one. We sent out 30 notices. We received zero in favor, zero in opposition. And so, staff is recommending approval. It is a brand-new house. It has, it looks great in that spot in the neighborhood, so staff feels that it will work well with the normal conditions of maintaining the parking, obtain a certificate of occupancy, and a fire inspection.
Okay. Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward.
My name is Surina, and I bought a house a few months ago because I work here, but I live here for one week in one month, so the rest of three weeks a month, I let people stay and do short-term rental vacation.
Okay.
Yes. You have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. All right. CU 2403, 2246 Joy Road, a request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 2246 Joy Road.
Thank you. This is a request for a new short-term rental off of Lake Nazworthy. It is District 1, Tommy Hebert's district, of course, in the Nazworthy neighborhood, and it is RS1, single-family residential zoning. Also included in this slide, a photo of the front of the property. Here's sort of an overview of the Lake Nazworthy neighborhood right now. You see our yellow star is our current request. Our green star is current conditional uses with their COs. Blue stars are without, and then our red star are those that are denied or expired. We did mail out 11 notifications. Of those 11, we did not receive any in favor, and we received eight in opposition. In addition to those eight, we had a notified homeowner who brought in 35 other oppositions from outside of that 200-foot range. Most of the opposition cited concerns with the size of the lot, parking noise, and opposition to short terminals in general. Because it does meet all the minimum ordinance requirements, staff is recommending approval of a conditional use, subject to the usual three conditions, to maintain two off-street parking spaces, obtain a certificate of occupancy, obtain and comply with annual fire inspections. That note at the bottom is just a reminder that approval of this conditional use is good for one year until renewal. With that, if you have any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff?
I need the blue stars.
Those are, that are operating, but don't have?
They have an approved conditional use, but they have not gotten their CO yet.
Gotcha. Okay, 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 okay. Sorry, I'm so sorry. Got it. Following. I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that.
Of course.
All right, any other questions? Austin, thank you. We're going to open it up for public comment. With the number of folks here, I'd like to try to limit speaking to three minutes. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes. And would you like to hear from the property owner first, and then the others?
That'd be great.
Okay.
If the owner's here, yes, please.
Feel like I'm fighting a committee here. Dylan Burns, I'm the owner of 2246 Joy Road. I personally own and in-house operate. We don't have management companies, but I have 121 long-term and short-term rental properties in New Mexico, Texas, Oklahoma. We... (noise) Short-term renting, my primary company has over 100 employees. We also allow our employees to go, you know, it's like a bonus to spend time at our vacation rental properties. We have procedures in place for, you know, any, we're not, we're not trying to rent to party people. We do not have instant booking allowed. People have to be verified. They have to have at least two five-star ratings. We're not going to rent to them. I don't want someone coming to trash my property. I would say that your short-term clientele is going to be a higher grade of class than your long-term renters. So, if I stuck a long-term renter in this property, it's not going to be maintained. We keep them, we have maintenance crews. I have cleaning crews. As soon as the property's vacated, people are there. I mean, it's a primary source of my income, so I take pride in it, and we, we work hard to keep our properties. (noise) Check, check. Okay. (noise) If you have questions for me, I have a little simple printout. If anybody wants to look at our procedures and whatnot. (noise) Me and my wife live about 10 minutes from the property, so we, I mean, we drive by it going into town literally every day. Most of my office staff is in Lubbock, but I, in addition to my wife and myself, I have a property manager that lives here. My sister also works in my office, who is a San Angelo resident. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Can you explain? You said no instant.
Yes, so that's a feature like on your Airbnb or VRBO sites, a lot of listings, people can go on and just instantly book without any approval. Our, all of our properties have to be, you have to request your dates, and then that's when my girl is going to go in and look at their prior reviews. If they don't have a profile picture, we won't rent to them. If they don't have at least, like I said, two five-star reviews, we won't rent to them. I don't want to inherit a mess, so we're not, again, I'm not trying to rent to college kids.
All right. Anyone else have questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay? Ooh, that's loud. Okay, let's try to continue here.
Okay. Yeah, good morning. I'm Jerry Lancaster. My wife and I own the property at 2250 Joy Road, directly next door to 2246. And we have several here that's interested in opposition to this application. I know we have more than 40 formal protests that we have filed to the short-term rental. Several are here this morning. I have served on the Board of Directors in the past of the Lake Nazworthy Homeowners Association, and I believe at least 98% of all members of the association are opposed to short-term rentals. My wife and I live in Midland at 1,003 Woodland Park Avenue, but we, we will be moving eventually to 2250 Joy Road. The, our holdup right now is, I have a 97-year-old mother that, with dementia in Midland, and so, but at some point later, we will be moving to 2250 Joy Road. This property at Joy Road was not purchased by an individual, but was purchased by an LLC and a LP for the sole purpose of operating a short-term rental, effectively establishing a motel room with tenants coming and going all day, every day, at all hours, with absolutely no owner supervision as to the number of people in the house, backyard and boat dock, or the number of vehicles parked on the property, and even bleeding over onto the grass of the property next door. The trash is picked up on Tuesdays, and there is no one here to even set their full trashcans out on the street. The very first day that the new owners appeared to take possession of the property, I met Dylan Burns and Michaela Gorman, introduced myself to them, and falsely assumed they were a married couple. Dylan told me, I understood that, he said they lived in town and would be using this lake house as a place for their family to relax and enjoy the lake on weekends and after hours during the week, and also as a perk for their employees to come out and occasionally enjoy the lake house. This was all a lie. Dylan actually lives just outside of Lubbock, as I understand it. Apparently, Michaela may, she, maybe she's the contact person for rentals, although I haven't seen her. I have only seen cleaning people come after each rental party departs the property. Being extremely presumptuous and disrespectful, the new owners of 2246 Joy Road have begun renting out the property to various groups without a permit, not waiting for today's hearing on March 18th. Although their website states their rules, including a limit of no more than six persons and three cars, they have not attempted to enforce those rules. And in fact, when one renter asked if it was okay if they have three or four additional couples over to the house, Dylan stated, oh, yes, no problem. They have already rented this home as an Airbnb for the following dates. This info is current as of yesterday, March 1st through the 24th, every day. March 30th, April 7th and 8th, April 12th and 13th, April 19th through the 22nd, April 26th through the 27th, May 10th, May 23rd, May 25th, June 22nd, July 12th and 13th, July 20th, September 12th through 30th, October all month, November all month, and December all month. This is the second residence on Joy Road that has applied for a short-term rental. You turned down the first one because of lack of parking and extreme closeness of the properties, because of the long, narrow lots. Today's request has the same problems with parking and closeness of homes to each other. We arrived at our lake home at 2250 Joy Road Thursday afternoon, March 7th. On Friday afternoon, March 8th, a GMC SUV arrived with the husband, wife, and kids unloading for the weekend. I asked what they were doing. They apparently had been warned not to talk to us, and when his wife walked up, the husband told her not to talk. Joy Road have begun renting out the property to various groups without a permit, not waiting for today's hearing on March 18th. Although their website states their rules, including a limit of no more than six persons and three cars, they have not attempted to enforce those rules. And in fact, when one renter asked if it was okay if they have three or four additional couples over to the house, Dylan stated, "Oh, yes, no problem." They have already rented this home as an Airbnb for the following dates. This info is current as of yesterday. March 1st through the 24th, every day. March 30th, April 7th and 8th, April 12th and 13th, April 19th through the 22nd, April 26th through the 27th, May 10th, May 23rd, May 25th, June 22nd, July 12th and 13th, July 20th, September 12th through 30th, October all month, November all month, and December all month. This is the second residence on Joy Road that has applied for a short-term rental. You turned down the first one because of lack of parking and extreme closeness of the properties, because of the long, narrow lots. Today's request has the same problems with parking and closeness of homes to each other. We arrived at our lake home at 2250 Joy Road Thursday afternoon, March 7th. On Friday afternoon, March 8th, a GMC SUV arrived with the husband, wife, and kids unloading for the weekend. I asked what they were doing. They apparently had been warned not to talk to us, and when his wife walked up, the husband told her not to talk. They finally admitted that they had rented it for the weekend and stated that they had booked it online. They would not tell me their name or where they were from, but said they were from West Texas. We later found out they were from Odessa. They checked out Sunday, March 10th. A family from Brownsville checked in Monday, March 11th, staying through March 14th. They appeared to be a family of four in a black minivan. At 6:15 PM on March 11th, there were two cars parked there. By 9:00 PM, there were five cars and multiple adults and two teens. On Tuesday, March 12th, at 8:00 PM, there were six cars and approximately 20 people outside with an unknown number inside. The party broke up about 11:50 PM. On Wednesday, March 13th, there were seven cars, 15 people outside, and an unknown, unknown number inside. At 7:45 PM, there were 12 cars with two cars parked on the grass of the neighbor next door owned by Paula and Marlo Wojtek, Wojtek, and approximately 20 people on the property out at the boat slip, in the backyard, and under the patio, or in the house. On March-
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You've provided us with a ton of information.
Okay.
I've had a chance to, to, to go through and briefly review it.
Okay.
Are there any specifics within this context that you'd like to, to point out and address for why you feel like this short-term rental should not be approved?
Yeah, the, the extreme closeness of the properties.
Okay.
These are very long, narrow lots.
Okay.
And, and I was just about to get in, into that, as far as measurements of, of the lots.
You've provided some photos that look pretty descriptive here.
Yes. Some of those very first ones are showing the, the real big party that was there.
Yeah, the cars.
Where there were more than 20 people. And they were, they were parked everywhere.
Where is this photo taken?
I, I want to be really careful, real quick, before we start. Looking at photos and whatnot, I think that that is, I just, I want to, I don't want to, I'm just going to be very blunt here. I, I think that this is something that we don't want to encourage, although I appreciate and understand where you're coming from, but I, I feel like this is, I mean, if someone were taking photos of your property and sharing that publicly with, in a meeting like this, I'm sure that would make you very uncomfortable. And so I, I don't want to encourage people to be utilizing phones or technology to take photos of people's private property or approach people that are at their private property. That makes me very, very nervous from a safety concern, and I, I appreciate what you've done. I'm not, I'm not by any means admonishing you, but I, I want to be careful in how we approach that as a planning commission, because I certainly don't think that this is a good idea, because I don't think anyone here would like somebody taking pictures of their private property or, you know, I, I don't know, that makes me very nervous. So just for the purpose of, of being on the record on that.
Just to clarify for us, where is this photo?
This is taken out of my backyard.
Okay.
And it's- We own a two-story house, and then this is their-
This is the short-term rental?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So to Michelle's point, we, we have an ordinance in place, and I, I think if there are extenuating circumstances for why a property shouldn't be approved, we'd like to hear and discuss it. If we're talking about the broader issue of not liking the short-term rental ordinance, I think that's a conversation for a different meeting. And we have a, I believe, a joint meeting that's scheduled to come up here in the next few weeks with the City Council, where we're going to review the short-term rental policies and I think look at making some changes to those policies. But I don't want to get into the weeds about, you know, what, what's not fair about the short-term rental policies today in this meeting, because we've adopted policies. And if there are circumstances for why this specific property shouldn't be approved, we'd like to hear them and discuss them and consider them. And I think you've raised some points. You're concerned about the narrowness of the lot, I think was one of them, and your concern about the operator or the applicant operating the short-term rental before he obtained-
Because they have now shown some history of the way they're going to operate it.
Right.
And you can tell from the number of people and cars there, they're even violating their own rules.
Okay.
And then the, the specifics that I would point out.
Yes, sir.
The, these properties were extremely close. There are other, most of the properties on the lake are not this narrow and close. But our ski dock, ski lift dock, is only seven inches from the walkway to their boat slip. And the, these have been there for many, many years. They were there long before we purchased it, or they, they purchased theirs. The, the wall to our sunroom next to the water at our home is only eight feet from their backyard. Our backyard patio is only seven feet from the property lines separating our properties. Our living room wall is 12 and a half feet from their master bedroom wall. The Wojtek's house is 17 feet from the wall, wall to wall. But we're a very quiet, family-oriented residential street with very little traffic noise and no homes on the street that currently engage in loud partying and excessive drinking. And I think that a short-term rental in these very small lots is going to be very disturbing.
Yes, sir.
Really. Lancaster, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
Uh, my first question is, so you're, you're mentioning loud parties and drinking. Have, has that been an issue to this, to date?
The, the, the large party that was there, the, the, these parties have been, have not been drinking and, and that I can tell.
No excessive noise, nothing like that?
I won't say it wasn't excessive noise, but, because the, the, all of the guests that was there left about midnight.
Okay. So let me ask you that-
And they were noisy at that point.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
Uh, my other question is just, one thing I, I, I think that in these short-term rentals that we have to consider is, you know, as the owner mentioned, if it's not a short-term rental, they could rent it out to a long-term renter, and that, that's not going to change regarding your property line.
Oh, sure.
Or regarding how they use the property by any means. So those are just things that I think, you know, from a perspective of how the property is used, as those in opposition should take into consideration is, there's much less, what's the word, oversight, for lack of a better word, from a long-term rental than there is going to be from a short-term rental. So if, if you have a tenant there that's a long-term rental and that has the same issues, parties, loud, drinking, whatever that may be, that you as homeowners feel is inappropriate, understand that to remove a long-term tenant is going to take months and months and months and months, and it may not ever happen. So I just, this is-
We've never had that happen.
Right, but, I mean, the, the owner is not going to live in this house. It's either going to be a short-term rental or a long-term rental. So just for your own thought and consideration, that's, that's what you're up against in, in the opposition here. So I just want you guys to think about that, because if you get a long-term tenant, to, to actually remove a long-term tenant is an incredibly difficult process.
And we've had, we've, we have some long, we have had long-term tenants on Joy Road.
Sure.
And they have not been a problem. We've not had any, any objection to that.
Gotcha. Well, you couldn't object to that, really, so there's, that's, but-
And the, the, another thing that's unique to this property, besides being super close to each other, the, we are super close to town, to shopping. It's a very desirable location. And we are on big, wide, open water. Our houses are only 12 or 15 feet from the water in this location. And because it's desirable, they're going to be rented constantly to short-term rentals. The, it's, it's disturbing to see this much traffic constantly coming and going, and that, that's what we're going to be looking at in the future. So we, we highly object to it.
And I do have a question on dates. Are these ones that you got on Airbnb or VRBO, like the April, May, September?
I got this off of their website, advertising this address.
Okay.
I don't know if it's true, but they are marked off for those dates.
Okay.
And so far, it's been accurate.
Okay.
We were shocked that they started renting it before this hearing never happened.
Right. That, that is a concern.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Lancaster.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steph, do we have a photo of, sorry, you can come up, I just have a-
Yeah, please come on up.
Question. In past, you know, as far as like the frontal view and the sides of the homes, do we have a front photo?
While she's changing the photos, this home that's in question was built in 2020, did receive inspections, and did get built to the RS1 standards. And so RS1 standards are a five-foot setback on either side for the side yards. And so if you're in an RS1 district anywhere in town, your setback is typically five feet. And so even what the gentleman, Mr. Lancaster, I believe his name was, said that his home is seven feet from his property line. This home is five feet, so you do have the 12-foot separation between the structures at the closest point, I believe.
Right. It complies with the-
So it does comply with the zoning district.
Conditions.
That is correct.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Mary Staha, and my husband David is still sitting back there, but we have had to deal with, we live at 2226, which is three houses over from 2246. And these numbers on this street are quirky. It doesn't go 22, 24, 26. It just, they jump. Anyway, we all share what is commonly classified as zero lot lines, shared by chain-link fence or see-through wrought iron. And several years ago, before short-term rentals, Airbnbs, the previous owner has, had two houses that were grandfathered as lake houses, still out on the water. And they did not care what they rented every single weekend that we lived right next door to. It's a one-bedroom, one-bath, both of them are. And by hotel-motel health regulations, y'all all know what that was limited to. 2246 is a three-bedroom, two-bath, so you can accommodate legally six people. They had 12 people every weekend, because it was out-of-towners that rented. With a one-bathroom house, you saw, we saw, because our windows overlook all those places, as the letter that I turned in, that I don't want to get into detail, a lot of unsanitary, unsightly, disgusting. Yes, the police were called. They were informed, "Do not, if there's any retaliation on these neighbors that live here permanently, from any of you that have been turned in, you will be taken to jail." Another thing, they left their trash. They were fishers. They cut fish heads off and hung them in the trees for advertising on how large the catfish that they caught. This residence, 2246, does not have any outdoor facilities to clean any fish that they kill. And that does make a nuisance on the smells.
Sure.
The noise, yes. It gets very loud. In-town short-terms are comfortable. At the lake, it is a party atmosphere. When people take in, "Hey, we can go out there for the weekend. We can take over," as Mr. Lancaster said earlier, what was legally, not legally, I can't speak for legality, but on the short-term rental at 2246, limited to six, three cars. And as he stressed, there was 12-plus both times and violation on the parking. To where in turn, this is an early part of the season. Wait till the great warmth of summer hits, and they start bringing in more. And again, my, we have all, we're all in our 60s to 80s, retirees, comfortable. We live on a quiet, serene, peaceful street, and we are just not ready. Don't want to have to. We have heard from the Red Bluff areas how bad it can and does get.
Okay. You, you've raised an issue that hasn't been brought to the attention of this board, I don't think. We've had a short-term rental policy in place for several years now.
Mm-hmm.
We've had several renewals come through. I can't think of a renewal that we didn't grant short of a property that hadn't been operating and didn't have the representative here. Can y'all think of any that, where we had complaints or problems with the short-term rental on a renewal?
No, I need to quickly ask that question, Travis, just like you did today.
Absolutely. It's a condition.
Yep.
How are we supposed to enforce their limited occupancy and parking? Who are we supposed to call when it gets out of control? Are we supposed to call the police that say, "Oh"?
Erin.
Are we supposed to call the homeowner at all hours of the night after it exceeds?
Steph, I believe that's why homeowners are required to share their number.
Yeah, there's a couple of, couple of options.
Okay. Well, what if they're out of town and cannot be reached, but we're still having to be in ears distance, visual distance, to put up with it? So-
There are multiple entities that deal with the violations that could be, take place. So one thing is, on the weekends, our Lake Patrol, as well as Police Department, take calls, and they have to prioritize them of importance of-
Sure.
-respond to those. If there's excessive noise, if there's people trespassing going onto other private property, or parking on other private property, then that's an, then that could be an issue that they could look at. Our code enforcement also works those cases if there's evidence to be able to move forward with the case. I, I do just, on our ordinance, all three-bedroom houses are required to have two parking spaces. If you add a bedroom, say if this one turned into a fourth bedroom, they would have to add another parking space. They already have two parking spaces. They actually have enough room for four parking spaces. In every part of our town, if there's an access easement, a public access easement or right-of-way, citizens can park in those areas. As long as they're not parking on private property, that is not a violation. As long as they're not blocking entry and egress into those areas, that is not a violation. And so those are, they could be violations depending on where the vehicles are located. Again, whatever the operator chooses to say and his limitations for how they rent it, that's not a city item that would be enforceable. We would not enforce his rules. That's for their local operator, which we've confirmed on their address, that they do have a local operator that is supposed to be available. That information is distributed out in that 200-foot circle on our notices that has the local operator information for folks to, to contact. And so as we move forward with our short-term rental in general, we hope to have some interactive stuff for our citizens so they have a way to contact folks directly that are operators of our short-term rentals in our community. We have not quite gotten there yet, but we are moving in that direction.
Okay.
As it's been already brought, addressed to the committee and to the residents, the violations have already started. How, why, when that zoning request was put up and we contacted, informing the radius that the letters would be sent out, which they wore, which we received, which we filled out and complied, why was it already being rented?
That's my end question.
We can't answer that question, yeah.
Yeah, please come on up.
We do have, we, we are listed on Airbnb and the dates that he's going in there.
Yeah, come on up.
The dates that he's looking at are, those are prior bookings that I'm, you know, hoping to accommodate by-
Right.
-complying here. The groups of people that have been there were Spanish families that worked for me. And again, so yes, that last weekend, I knew this was going to be a deal. There were lots of vehicles there.
Right.
And they're employees of mine. So even if I get denied a short-term permit, I'm still going to allow my employees to utilize my home. So, you know, I...
Rent-free.
Right. And there are tons of these that are around town that I know operate without permits.
Right.
And so we're trying to comply.
And so the blocked dates online, they're referencing blocked dates online.
They're just looking at our calendar. No, like I said, nobody can instant book our property. So it's, they have to come through my office staff first.
Okay.
Sorry, we...
Thank you.
I don't want to disrespect you.
Please, please come on up. I...
I don't want to disrespect you, but we did introduce ourselves to these people. And one gentleman that rented it happened to be a Border Patrol agent. You have Border Patrol agents as employees?
Possibly.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Please take everything into consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Dwayne Davis. I live at 2218 Joy Road. I have a daughter, nine years old, rides bicycles up and down the street. My neighbor has three kids. They play right there. We're on a cul-de-sac right there, Joy Road is.
Yes, sir.
It's kind of strange, Joy Road. We just don't want to turn it into Misery Lane, and that's where we're going here, kind of. We have the beach at the far end, and we live with that problem daily, yearly, and all. But they've, everybody's learned that that is the beach, and that's where everybody goes and plays. And people that rent these deals, they're going to walk, they're going to be going to the beach, using the lake. And we just chose to live out there and not live next to a motel. And that's, and you talk about the renters. Renters, they move in and they establish. We make contacts, you become friends, you, whatever. Even if they don't own it, we have renters on, up and down the street. That's not a, not a problem. People that come and just stay a short time don't appreciate like people that do rent or own.
Okay.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm opposed to it.
Thank you.
Hello, Ken Taylor, 2810 Red Bluff. I have and currently own and operate many rental properties from long-term to short-term properties. I don't want to specifically drag on that, but it has been a point that we've kind of been discussing. I can tell you that short-term rentals do have far more issues and problems than long-term rentals. So that is common. Short-term rentals in neighborhoods without the recreational draw of the lake have far less problems than normal rental properties where people do blend into neighborhoods. What I would like to just kind of make sure that we're all on the same page with. There are many short-term rentals on the lake. Obviously, this, this committee sees them. Y'all approve them, y'all disapprove them for a lot of different reasons. I just like to make sure that there's some consistency in that process. And the fact that y'all do see many and approve and disapprove, I appreciate the fact that y'all take each property into consideration. Thank you for what y'all do. On Joy Road, we do have many concerns with the size of the lot, the parking within the last 12 months. I believe it was four doors down from this when y'all had one come to panel that was not approved. Y'all denied it 6-0. It was appealed, went to City Council. They denied it 6-1. Y'all got it right. Thank you. I just would like to reinforce that the same concerns that were there are here with this property. There's not adequate parking. There's not space between the houses. Yes, it was recently built, I believe you said, 2020. But when it was recently built, that builder at that time did not come to the HOA Architectural Committee, which would have denied this one, because when you rebuild a house, you have to have a 75-foot setback from the lake. City planning allowed it, or permitting allowed it, but it was not built with proper setback lines. So the lack of space in the backyard, the overflow of people into the neighbor's yard, the fact that it already does have, I can't say whether or not these people are guests or renters. I don't know. But we do see that they've already started a history of overcrowding, and it's a problem before it ever starts. So I would encourage you to look at this one the same way you did the last one and to deny this permit.
Ken, you've raised a couple of issues that I want to clarify and understand a little bit better. So let's talk about the house a couple of doors down that we denied.
Yes.
My recollection of that case was that the house was set much closer to the front of the lot. There was no, there was inadequate off-street parking. And because of the location of that home, it seemed to us to be a lot more disruptive to the neighbors to have a house that, that has a backyard space that would impact the neighbors a lot more than, than any of these other houses on this, on this stretch.
The backyard of the property that was denied was essentially in the front yard of the neighboring home.
Yes, it was.
And so that was a big portion of why it was denied.
And the other clarification I want to make that's really important is that I strongly believe in fair and equitable. And we've established short-term rental policies that we're trying to enforce as consistently and fairly across the board as we can. At times, that's challenging, especially with circumstances like this where we have a bunch of houses on 50-foot lots. So I want everyone here to understand that we're, my view, and I think my colleagues would agree, is to be as fair and equitable as we can. And to see opposition like this is certainly concerning. But I don't know if it's fair for us to deny a short-term rental because the neighbors don't want it. If it complies with all other aspects of the short-term rental policy. Unless there's an extenuating circumstance, I'm, it's hard for me to object.
And whether we talk about the house being too far forward or too far backwards. If it's too far forward, there's not enough parking. If it's too far backward, we have ample parking. Where are you going to put all these people that are parking there?
Right.
In this tiny backyard where they overflow into other areas? We talk about meeting all criteria. One of the criteria is a 30-foot street, and that is not being enforced.
I don't think we...
He's got another person who met up to us this last week, and there are really no 30-foot streets in San Angelo. I think there's maybe two.
Correct. So why was it put on as one of the criteria?
I don't think that's part of our ordinance anymore.
It is part of our...
It is part of our ordinance currently, and amendments that will be going to that April 16th meeting.
I've asked that question many times. Why is it on the ordinance and not being enforced?
Right.
Fair question.
And we keep getting this answer, well, we can't enforce that. Then why is it in there? And if it's going to get redrawn, well, then maybe at that point in time, we say, okay, that's not enforceable. But at this time, it is.
Right.
And the fact that no one's challenged it or brought suit against it, I can't speak of. But we can't say this meets all, all criteria, because it doesn't.
There's court cases that, in our interpretation, make that provision unenforceable.
So why is it still on the books?
Because we're working to get it amended now, and that process is outside the scope of here.
My only analogy of that is if I get a speeding ticket and tell Judge Daniels that they're lowering the speed limit next month, he's going to say, that's great. Next month, drive that fast. That's still on the books, and legally, it should be enforced. I didn't want to hone in on that, but since we brought it up.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, from a legal standpoint, it's there.
He gave you the answer from a legal standpoint, and whether it's enforceable as well. So we're just going to leave that there.
Fair enough.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Thank y'all for taking my comments.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
I have one other thing I'd like to rebut, what he said.
If you, if you'll be brief with it, I would, I'd be happy to let you do that.
It's very brief.
Yes, sir.
He was talking about that the, the people that were there this week are employees.
Yes.
I would swear they are not. I talked to all of them, and they didn't even understand exactly what the short-term rule was.
Okay.
And that one of them is a Border Patrol agent. Another renter works in the oil and gas industry.
Okay.
They're not employees.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
They could be spouses. That's, you know, or if, if the owner is renting to a family of, like, an employee, and that person has the ability to bring a cousin, I mean, that's unfortunately not a...
And I, again, I just really, 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 really think it's important to mention that there are, like Erin mentioned, resources to, to bring complaints, to address concerns. I really, really, really want to be very, very, very careful and cautious, like caution the community that, one, it is not appropriate to be approaching people in that manner or be taking photos of each other's properties. Like, you're getting into a totally different realm, and again, from a safety perspective, too. And I, I mean, no disrespect. I understand completely why you've done what you've done. I'm not trying to admonish anyone, but I, I just think it kind of goes back to that golden rule of, let's not do to others what we want, you know, done to us. Because I certainly don't think any of you would want anyone taking photos of your property or, you know, tapping somebody on their shoulder when they come to visit you and ask why they're there and who they are and who they belong to. I, that is, this idea of like vigilante investigations is something I just really, really want to make sure we're not encouraging the community to do. And I think, again, I have asked multiple times on this commission how we're getting information out to residents as to how to make complaints and how to make, bring forward concerns. And I think this exact example is a reason why we need to be communicating that very clearly, very accurately. I brought up the 30-foot street last week and asked why that wasn't a policy as well. So we hear you. We understand. I am, I am like 1,000%. We are all asking these same questions. Unfortunately, there are just so many people in so many days and so many hours in the week, and these guys work really, really hard. So we're in that process of taking care of some of those concerns. But I just want to make sure that you guys know that there is an outlet to bring those concerns instead of taking photos and conducting your own investigations. Sorry for my soapbox for that, but...
Yes, sir. Please come on up.
Concerned about that.
My, my daughter, like I said, is 10, nine, 10 years old, and granddaughters come over and all. And they make cookies, and they've delivered cookies to everybody on that street and everything and all. So now I got to tell them, you got to be careful. You got to be careful. You got, you know, we don't know who them people are. You see what, I'm taking the innocence away from them living on this street that is so tight-knit.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm not, I'm not, maybe it would have helped if you would have came and introduced yourself to everybody on the street and all, and said who we are.
Sir, I think, I think we need to address the dais up here, not the citizens and the...
Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right. Does anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. But this one's really, this one's difficult for me because of the opposition from the neighbors. I mean, clearly, you guys don't want it out there. You know, I, I can't help but reflect back on the short-term rental process that we've been through. And Lake Nazworthy has, has opposed a lot of, well, they've, they've opposed, by and large, strong opposition to short-term rentals from the beginning. And I, I understand your viewpoints and your concerns. I, I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know how to address, I don't know how to keep people from having short-term rentals out at the lake. We've had case rulings that have said that short-term rentals are residential use. So the city's trying to draft and enforce policies, number one, that they can adhere to and enforce with the limited staff and resources that they have. And I think, for me, job one is health and safety. And I think if we, if we have the right, if, if our city is going into commercial properties like hotels and doing annual inspections for, for health and safety purposes, then I personally think that we should have the same standard on short-term rentals. So those, those are my thoughts here.
And I'm going to have a very unpopular comment. So I think, you know, being that you, when you go, when you choose to live on the lake, you also choose to come with, accept what comes with it. You can't, you know, get mad at the jet skier that comes racing by. You can't do any of those things. Just like if I lived on the golf course, I can't help if somebody parks their golf cart in front of my gate while they're golfing and have music blaring and are drinking beers. It's, it's, unfortunately, that's part of what you accepted when you purchased a property, in my opinion. We've had other cases come in front of us at the lake. Beatty, Beatty Road was a huge one with a lot of opposition as well. Because again, street and lots and, you know, exactly the same, you know, same concerns. But at the end of the day, if we're looking at the two on Joy Road, the one that was turned down due to the opposition was truly due to the fact of no fence and where the properties sat in position to each other. The backyard of one was in the front yard of another, and that did not make sense for us.
Is that, is it on the map at 2274? Is that the property? So I mean, you can't even park a car on the, on the lot in the front yard of that, of that property, so...
Whereas this one appears to have the parking that would be required for any other short-term rental. And it does, even though, as Ken mentioned, doesn't, maybe didn't follow the architectural standards of the lake. Maybe it got a variance request. I'm not sure. I wasn't part of it at that point. But it did comply with the city's expectations of lot placement. So that's my thought.
And some of the things that I remember, the two at the lake or three, Beatty, and then one way off, where was it?
Red Bluff.
Yeah, Red Bluff, yeah.
Red Bluff.
And then the one here on Joy Road was due mainly to the composition of the lot, the structures, and how it fit between the other two properties. It was very based on those properties not having, having something that made it good for all neighbors. And each one was studied separately. Each one was looked at with a keen eye on what does that one have or not have. And I hate neighbors to be so close. These were small, small lots done a long time ago, and it's just what it is.
Okay. Anyone else want to share thoughts or make a motion?
I'm going to, can we bring up the criteria from the city, just to make sure? So same as normal, I'm going to be the unpopular voter, and I'm going to vote to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So we have 5-1 to approve. All right, next items, public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium. Address all comments to the dais begin by stating their name and address. I'm going to open up public comment for items not on the agenda. Anyone wish to speak?
Before you go to that, can I get my notebooks?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And we do, you'll notice it will build in the full City Council.
Yes, sir. Here you go, Mr. Lancaster. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, so open public comment for items not on the agenda.
God, I don't want to be up here.
Good morning.
Should we wait a little bit? Okay, so my name is Doug Robinson. I just wanted to address y'all before y'all address the City Council later. Because some things just don't make sense to me. Maybe y'all can tell me what, why this is. So whenever a short-term rental comes into account, y'all send out letters 200 feet. But then we respect them to 500 feet. So is the 300 feet don't matter? So is the 300 feet don't matter or what? Why is that?
The 200 foot is, I think, out of our local code, but it's also a state code requirement for notice.
Minimum distance requirement for notice.
Okay.
But it's not in any way related to the 500-foot restriction.
Okay, okay, so, okay, okay. All right, so, one, y'all have a really hard job to do that. Y'all, I mean, y'all have a hard job. I don't know if there's any kind of thing that y'all can do, but I've lived in Southland, I've lived in, at the lake, and I lived in Santa Rita. At the lake, you're going to have parties there. That's just, I mean, the people that were next door to me, they didn't even, they owned the house, but they lived in Midland. Well, every weekend, they were partying. I didn't have that problem in Southland and I didn't, I mean, just to what you said.
Right.
You're exactly right. But, and I don't know that y'all can zone them differently or something when you're talking to the city council.
Well, I think one of the great challenges of Lake Nazworthy is that it's a public-access recreational lake and it is a valuable resource in West Texas. And we've seen from the money that's been invested in the houses that are on that lake, that it's not just our community, it's folks outside of, it's the Permian Basin.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's all parts of West Texas that are coming out to enjoy the water for the weekend. So it's a challenge.
It is, it is. Also, when y'all are talking to the city, make sure, or to the city council, y'all are seeing this every month and y'all know what's going on. The city council, they're not hearing all this, all the time. They don't understand that, that all the checks and balances that goes into this. And y'all need to make sure that y'all are applying that. I mean, at the last city council, one of the girls, one of the city councilwomen was saying, well, you know, let's make it 1,000 feet from a school. I mean, if there's any kind of data that said that it was going to make everyone safer for 1,000 feet, let's do it, but show me the data. Let's don't just do things just because.
Well, I also think it's important, I, just if I may, sorry.
Sure.
Come on, I'm real chatty today, guys. So I also think it's, one thing I'm curious about, to your point, is the question of why the feet ruling on the school, I mean, why, where is that coming from? Am I understanding it specifically related to safety and potential predator behavior and that kind of thing? And I think it's important to note, like, if it were a long-term rental, a sex offender could live there, no problem. I mean, like, that, they can live anywhere. And so, you know, I appreciate and understand you were put on notice in that case, but correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, that, that's, I mean, that issue can arise, short-term, long-term, permanent resident.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
We've just been asked to work off of that 500 feet.
Sure, gotcha.
So that's, that's what's coming forward.
Gotcha.
I think that will be debated at the April 16th joint commission.
I just am curious where the, kind of the partner on that is, the safety, okay.
It is children's safety around, around schools.
Schools, sure, gotcha.
That is their high priority. I think one of the other really big challenges with short-term rentals that the staff's faced and is still trying to tackle is how to enforce, how to bring everybody into compliance. And I think the proposed changes where we have a, an annual review period for all short-term rentals.
Yeah.
So there's not this inconsistent approach to applying a year or two for, for reviews and everything. I hope really improves the, the ability for the staff to go in and, and more clearly define and enforce the rules that we've got.
Yeah, I mean, I just speak for myself, but, I mean, I think, I think we need the guidelines, which I think y'all have already done, but to add 1,000 feet and to add, okay, well, this place is a daycare now, so now you can't have it. I mean, the staff is overworked now as, and they can't enforce that. So there's no sense in putting that in there because they're not going to be able to enforce it anyway. The other thing is, you know, lean on staff. I think that, that's the reason you have staff, that's the reason you're sending them to the meetings, that's the reason they're giving the information and getting back to y'all. So y'all lean on them, then y'all lean on the city council and let them know what's going on. Because I've been doing this for over a year now and I've come to the majority of the planning commission and the ZAB meetings and, you know, I haven't seen y'all, I haven't seen a police report on any of the things, I haven't seen any code enforcements on any of the Airbnbs, nothing like that. And my goodness, please, whatever you do, right now, the way that y'all have got it written is y'all are going to make it to where nobody can take anything up to the ZAB. Why do we have the ZAB board?
Right.
I mean, why is that? They're there for a reason. And if that was the case, if we weren't able to do that, I know of at least four, possibly five, that were affected, not because of us, and it's not because of staff, but it's because of the map. We've got a new map now that I think is worse than the first map, but it's not because, you know, it's not because of that, but. And the distance thing, I mean, the 500 feet, I wish we could say, well, the reason it's 500 feet is because of this, not because, well, sounded good, so let's go ahead and do that. I mean, let's have some facts behind it and make it work.
I think I could offer an opinion on why 500 feet. And it's, it's just kind of based on my recollection of conversations, but I think there was, there's a concern about concentrating short-term rentals in any specific area of a neighborhood.
Right.
So if you don't have a 500-foot limit and someone goes in and buys 10 houses on a, out of a 12-house block and operates short-term rentals, is that fair for the two homeowners that stay?
I agree with you to an extent.
So that's, I think that's why that limitation may have been put in there in the first place.
Well, I think the limitation was because of a lawyer in town, it's my lawyer, but he, but he said they were having parties at the lake and-
Well, I served on the STR committee that took months and months and months of study and hearing from people and that 500 feet was, as Travis said, it was more for protection of property owners and not to combine or be, you know, all-in-one-place STRs. We did a lot of study, we had people that came and gave witness and testimony, even about long-term rentals in order to understand what we needed to do with this short-term rental. And that's been several years ago, quite a few years, and that's why we're re-studying it with the city council to make some changes that we see don't work as well, maybe not as good. I don't agree with 1,000 feet, I think that's a bit stretching it, but I do agree about the schools because there's children that still walk home. San Angelo is not like Dallas and we still have children that walk home. So, but the 500 feet was extremely discussed at length and we came up with 500. Is that the, is that the number one starring number? I don't know today.
Right.
So I think it'll be discussed again, but that, that committee that was put together by the city council years ago to put together some rules and regs, we were going off of no-
Right, I know.
There was no other plan like it. And so, does it need to be tweaked after these years? The answer is yes. And that's what we're working on with the city council.
Right. And that, you know, and to you, I mean, like, the last guy that came up here and was talking about, he was fixing up a house in the Fort Concho neighborhood.
Yes.
Well, he's got the best house there and he said, man, I would love to be able to fix these other houses up.
Right.
And he could do it and he could afford it, but he can't do it and afford it a long-term rental.
Right.
Can't do it. And, and, you know, to your thing, okay, well, what happens if they buy a bunch of houses? Well, as much as I would think and I would like San Angelo to be a vacation destination, I mean, we're no Destin Beach. I just don't see us, you know, I just don't see that happening. And hopefully, if it is going to happen, maybe it is going to happen in some of the houses or in some of the neighborhoods that need to be brought up.
Right.
And then, you know, was it all ship rise with rising seas or whatever, so, you know. But anyway, but I just want y'all to make sure that y'all have y'all's voices heard with the city, with the council, because I don't think they get it. And it's no offense to them, they just don't live it like y'all do. And in turn, y'all don't live it like they do, you know?
Yes.
So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to, I'm going to close public comment. Planning directors report, Mr. Vanoy.
Yes, I do want to remind everyone that we do have that joint meeting scheduled April 16th. Your regular meeting is scheduled for April 15th. So, and we do have some cases to be heard on the 15th and then it will be 8:30 a.m. at McNeese Convention Center on the 16th that we'll have the joint meeting. We're getting ready to send out notice to the current short-term rental owners. We're sending out also a newspaper notice so that citizens can be aware and we do encourage citizen input because that's how they help guide what their community wants to be. So that's coming up. I'd like to congratulate Austin Reed. He is a full-fledged planner, he got a promotion, so he is a planner.
Hey, congratulations, Austin.
So he's done a great job for us, been with us just over 10 months, moved from planning tech to planner this month and so we're very excited for him and look forward to him continuing to contribute. It wasn't intentional, I gave him the hardest case today, but somehow it worked out. Yes, so.
Somehow you knew.
Other than that, we are looking at, as planners, we've got a big April coming forward, we've got the short-term rental thing, and then we are looking at having a strategic planning meeting with our planners that are planning staff. We might invite one or two of you to come and sit in for an hour here or there to give your take and input of where we're talking about things to go for staff. And so be looking forward to that. That'll probably be very close to the end of the month, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
For the record as such, I know I voted against the last short-term rental that we had just a moment ago and the reason for that.
I'd be very careful if we're talking about a prior case and decision.
Okay, well, then I won't say anything then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Travis, too, what I'd like to do is, I don't know what, if it's now or later, but one of the things I'd like staff to do is to take a look at the, where the tiny houses go. There seems to be across, I guess, the whole United States, a movement toward the tiny houses.
Yes, sir.
And where they are right now, as far as the zoning requirements, I think needs to be looked at. I think we need to, just like we did with the short-term rentals, I think there's a real opportunity to relook at that and open it and then maybe even have the same kind of meetings as, this would be a great location for four or five little tiny houses if they meet the criteria of the surrounding neighborhood. So whatever we need to do or the process that we need to take, I think it's appropriate with the costs that are being incurred.
Yep. All right, anyone else have thoughts? No? Follow-up and administrative issues, the next regular meeting of the planning commission is scheduled to begin at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, April 15th, right here, East Mezzanine of City Hall. Adjournment, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero, it is 10:27.